You said go ahead.
Yep.
Go.
I see by Monica's way, did we call the order? I see it in the presence of a quorum, so that makes this made with you. And Reverend Jones, would you leave us an indication?
We'll do that. That is great. Heavenly Father, Lord, in Jesus' name, once again, this day, we're thankful to you, Lord. God, for your blessings of the day, and we thank you, Lord, to be able to come together at this time to take care of the business of the town. And God, we do ask your help. We ask your guidance, Lord, and help us kind to be wise enough to receive it and follow it, Lord. And God, that your will be done. We thank you, God, for our town. We want to take care of it. So God, again, we thank you so much, and we ask you, Lord, to bless each one that you're tonight, and help us, Lord, to do the best we can for all concerned in Jesus' name with prayer. Amen.
That's how we can play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody has before me their electronic or written form, the minutes from the previous meeting. Will it contain the motion to accept as presented or make changes as needed?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second. All right, let's see the discussion. Although in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, please signify by standing aye. Aye, opposed and aye, I say aye. Okay, the minutes approved. Next item on the agenda is citizen's time, everybody. Y'all need to come, just come introduce yourself and tell me what you need to do.
Can I give you a little history on this?
We started back.
Um, we did receive a letter from the after prom requesting, what was their budget?
Two thousand.
Two thousand dollars, which was a budgeted item within the budget. So it did not come out of contributions. So that check is in the check run tonight. Um, they just wanted to come approach council about the payment that we were given after prom.
Okay. My name is Laura Hausman. This is Elizabeth Kraus. We are two of the parent representatives for Rural Retreat High School after prom party. Um, we are just here to ask for any financial support that you are willing to give us. Um, you are one of our greatest sponsors. We are very grateful for everything you have given us in the past, and we are here to ask for any kind of funding that you are willing to give us this year for a safe after prom. Thank you.
Where is the after prom party this year?
It is at the Crossroads Social House in Woodville. From eleven to two AM for all the juniors and seniors. Thank you.
Do you need to act on that tonight?
It's a budgeted item.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. It's hard to believe, we, me and you both got one to go with.
That we, we don't, we don't see any need to deviate from it, I don't think. It's our mother and Bob, us both, you know, just, you know, what we've done. Oh, now, I would like to add this. We have a little thing here. You can stay and watch the zoo if you'd like to. And if you want to go home and watch TV, you're welcome to do that too. If you, there's no requirements, we're glad to have if you want to stay. Anyway, you just decide, and we'll move on. Yeah, that's all right. You go right ahead.
Thank you.
It, yeah, yeah.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, we appreciate your time.
You're part of the prom party business.
She, all things, don't know whether to listen to us or not, it's the truth. I don't know. Who would want to stay and listen to this? Well, we grow old quick enough, you'll enjoy it as long as you can.
That was a great.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Okay. All right, we have correspondence from the town office.
Yes. Um, dear Rural Retreat Town employees, you are such gracious, helpful servants to the community. Your preparation and donation of the community center is essential to a successful blood drive. We had fifty-four donors and fifty-three units of blood product. Thank you for helping save lives. God bless you, Kay Corvyn, Rural Retreat leader of the Community Red Cross and Blood Mobile.
I hope Kay doesn't quit at two, because that's such a good job. Yeah, I think it's impressive. Anybody, it's nice to know that it's such a good thing. Okay, we have these correspondence from the town, off town council, pardon me.
Is this my time to bring up?
If you want to drive, it doesn't matter how well you get to do it, it doesn't have to involve.
Um, got a complaint on two dogs that are running loose off of Fry Avenue. They are not on a leash, and both of them are German shepherds. Then one did come into my yard this evening, so.
It's on Fry Avenue?
It's on Fry Avenue. You know the prayer that whoever the person is that has built that little road and has put a building up in there? Do you know that?
Is that the, is that the Corvyns?
That's great. Yeah, there's a house back in there.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, there's a little building, and he's put a, like a stove in the building.
It's probably the Corvyns.
Okay.
Be my guess.
Just wanted to bring that up. Also, I had a citizen to ask about the, and I don't know what's called, so help me out.
Okay.
The pond that holds the water there.
The detention pond down here?
Yes. Um, how long has it been since that's been cleaned out? And would it help to make it bigger to where it would not come down on the neighbors where it does?
She's talking behind you.
Oh, behind my house?
It's right across from where Betty Rich, that pond that's.
Yes, I thought she was talking about the one down here. Um, that is private property. Uh, it was owned by Mickey and Eddie Musser, and has been since sold. I can't remember the name of who the property owner is now. Um, but I have noticed it's filling up more than it ever has before in the past two years. Um. Do you, did Mickey and Eddie have to put that detention pond in when they built that?
So they probably did.
It was probably done when they put in the subdivision. So it was in compliance with the subdivision ordinance for erosion and settlement control and drainage.
Um. It probably be the, in the state right way, they have, you have to have that. I bet you they own a portion of that down there.
Let me look into that. I don't have an answer to that.
Okay. Heather, you can bring up the thing.
No, I always sit, I don't know.
Bring it up, or do I need to?
Uh, you can't even need to. You can, it's fine.
Okay. Um, Jason and I had talked today, and he has been in contact with someone from AEP. And, you know, I had asked about, um, the street light to be there for Betty Rich would start down through there. Um, Jason informed me that they would put the pole for the street light. Um, but she would have to pay seven dollars per month to do that. Um, I talked with Betty, and she, she had talked with Sherry, and they felt like that they shouldn't have to pay that seven dollars per month. Not only safety for the people that are walking down through there, um, but also of all the houses that Mr. Rich has built and brought in revenue, um, they felt like that they should not have to bear that seven dollars per month.
Now, I'm going to ask a question this second. Does it involve, and Bob always, I remember him saying that certain places has to have a light.
Like an intersection, and there has that light, right?
There's one at the intersection of Westfield.
Spit bomb, I don't know.
But I don't know if there's one, uh, on the Sherwood end. But.
There's not, there's not.
Is, is her, was her property part of the subdivision?
No.
No? Okay, because the subdivider was required to put those streetlights in that are up there.
Yes, it was requirement of subdivision ordinance.
Yes.
Well, my, my thing is this. Is you've got all these lights throughout town that are not in, not in a intersection or anything else that other people enjoy and feel safe and walk and do these things without having to pay anything. Say down here on Railroad Avenue, you've got six apartment complexes where the people who live in those apartment complexes don't pay real estate taxes. But yet they get the benefit of having a light in front of their house. I can see where Ms. Rich is coming from. It's not my decision to make, but I can see where she's coming from.
I would, I would weigh in and just say it doesn't, to me, the, I mean, of course, subdivision is good and it's fine, but just as a matter of public safety, in fact, it's on double grade, I have no problem.
I agree.
I don't, uh.
You really don't understand it. I really don't understand it, and really, until Halloween night.
Yeah.
That's when you, that's when it's like a. You get it?
Well, one, one child, that's too many. Yeah. So, Lord, we need a motion that the town take care of? I, I mean, what are we talking about?
Way out into the discuss, if you need that motion.
Well, I moved that the town, that except are in charge of that or pay for that.
Okay.
How about we, do we, may I say, we pay for all the lights in the street anyway? You had something on the board that you were not asking?
Kill them.
How do we get bill for that?
We get a separate AEP streetlight bill.
We get a streetlight bill.
We get a bill that says.
It'll just be another seven dollars on a, on our.
What do the streetlights cost us every month?
Hand me those back, Bob. For one time, we do this.
Yeah.
And then.
All right.
So, well, I'll, I'll ask the question I should be doing. Did that guy do any help to me about the fact that we have a lot of lights and they're out?
I did.
Do you get any kind of?
I did.
Action on that or a promise?
I did. Um, I was telling Ms. Dunford earlier.
Stop. Fifteen hundred dollars. Fourteen ninety-five thirty-nine. Fifteen hundred.
For all of them?
Go. Yes.
Um, I had a guy named Steve Knowles that I used to deal with with AEP. And I worked with him on making our water plant, our sewer plant and our lift station as priority, as far as when the power goes out, we're a priority. Great guy. I could call him at four in the morning on a Saturday while he was at the beach. He was going to answer the phone. Well, they had mass early retirement that they offered to a lot of their.
And did he take?
He took it. The last time I called him, he was like, Jason, I'm retired. So I finally found his replacement. And I was really worried because Mr. Knowles has some very big issues to fill. This guy has come through immensely. He's been great. Uh, I explained to him, I said, some of them we called in eight months ago. Some of them we've turned in two or three times, just to their, on their online site, and he, and they haven't been replaced. He sent me his personal email and actually said, you send me the poll numbers, the addresses, and we'll get them done. So I have, I think I have found that contact that I need to get something done.
Okay, I'm glad you're correct.
Um, but he said that they have had some issues, uh, with their going online and doing things that stuff's sitting around and not getting done. But if I go through this guy, I think I'll get, I'll get some, some action.
Okay, we're sure. Gone off to the side, we have a motion in a second about this. I guess I'll do the call for the question. Uh, this is, the motion is for the town to accept that payment for their light.
The, the money right now?
Yep. And the, and the AEP is going to take care of putting the light in.
There is no installation fee.
We've got this pretty well handled, something he likes it. Okay. Although in favor of the motion, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay.
I'll get it ordered tomorrow.
That's great. Thank you, Almoh, for bringing that back to us. Hey, we didn't say, we have to say yes all the time, but we did that time. Okay. That, is that pretty much taken care of correspondence? Here is nothing. Take it to the chief.
I'll, I'll call animal patrol about their dogs, but whoever's complaining, tell them that they can call too. I'm not doing any animals, but county's been handling all the animals.
Okay.
There's so much laws on that stuff, I don't know. Yeah, tell them to start calling too, and they'll guarantee that we take a couple. Them animal patrol officers, they got now, or they write you an article, so. Uh, I had, uh, uh, Elm Avenue property in court last week. The, not even before I went by, it was still pretty rough. But the next morning, I come by there and she cleaned it. So, uh, I told the, I testified to the judge that it was cleaned up satisfactory, and the other judge had left him instructions to dismiss it, if she had cleaned it up, so. We'll see how long it lasts.
That's, that's.
And I, I looked at her today, she cleaned up some more stuff I had laid out there, so maybe she will. Maybe that scared her, I don't know. Not yard sale season yet. Yeah, well, that's true. We get ready for sale season. I've done seen her at one, so, one yard sale over there, so. But that's all I have.
Um, and I did put this in my report, but the letter is going out to the individual on Westfield, is what.
Do we need to start on the house on the corner of Buck Street and Main? You know the roof's gone. I don't know what the limit is. Somebody help me. It, it, that will not be long until it falls in.
It was about a year ago.
Yeah, it's.
It's uninhabitable now.
It is indeed.
I've, I've been in it not too long, but the pigeons are living actually inside of it.
I mean, it's, you can't really, you can't really go on the ordinance of.
Wait, he, that might, are you another option?
Yes, I, yes, I do.
They, they'll live here?
Yes.
Uh, okay. I don't need to know. I just.
Can I, can I get with you on that?
It was the same line.
Did she?
I think somebody in California.
Oh, well, they might. A, a local person, landlord that owns rental properties used to. But she doesn't anymore.
It's somebody out of California. I think I have the address or the phone number in the office.
Yeah, we don't know. I don't, I might be misunderstanding. I might ask that you call the name. And I understand the legalities of that, and I just want to say, do you know, have a contact whoever that is?
I'm pretty sure we have a contact.
I, no, I, well, I had a caller, I can't remember.
We called them about mowing the grass, didn't we?
No, somebody's been mowing it there.
But didn't we have to call them one time about that?
Heard we did.
Jason Funkin and Mowit, they have for years.
I'm pretty sure I have a contact. I'll check. I'm pretty sure I do.
Well, anyway.
That would be more of a derelict property than.
Yeah, it's like, anyway, whatever the definition, I think, it sure sticks out pretty bad coming to town, whatever, you know, this. Maybe we need to start harvesting. That may not be a good mayor term, but I think. It is work. You feel, okay.
Well, look, we're just very alone in same lines. How about the one on Jefferson?
The one at the, one at the intersection of the beach right there, over in the woods?
No, the one that's right on Jefferson, the, about the fourth house up on the right. Oh, oh, the old house that's up there.
But it's at the cross section of the beach when it hits Jefferson, you're looking right at it.
It's close there. You can look right at it over there.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I mean, it's overgrown and you can't get in that place, can you?
I bet you when I first started here, it was something. No, it's dangerous inside, yeah.
Did you get on a tire, as my mother used to say?
They, they mowed it, but they just, their trees grew up there.
It's probably the neighbors that are mowing going in.
I think they, I don't know, it's like, remember? Really? I can't remember. I, I was there for something several years ago. But I, I thought they had some people in that door around me. You still have across the street. People across the street?
Jason, I bet you, we've had a lot of things to do, but that maybe, that's not something that's going to require days in and days out work, but maybe need to stop, start reminding them, you know, that's.
Along the same lines, we, we still have Mr. Singleton.
Yeah, but that's not been dealt with in the house below it.
No, the, yeah, the grub place.
The grub place?
Yeah.
That's.
I had, I had dealt with that with Mr. So, now, the property down there where the grub, it's on, it, it, the property's been cleaned up quite a bit.
But there's a tree growing up through it.
But the house is still in, in pretty bad shape. But it was bought by a young couple that are from Rural Retreat, and I went to school with one of them, and they bought it now. They really did clean up around it, and they kept it mowed. It, it looks a lot better than it used to. But me and Mr. Soby looked in, we rode, rode and looked at them, and when we were going through these derelict properties. Let me, let me see if I can't bring that back up and see what we can find out on that. But I will tell you that if we bring up these derelict properties, which Klotner, Klotner Panaplas may be getting the same thing that all these other people are getting, because that house up there on the hill ain't no better.
Well, no, it's good, good for the gathering. So, maybe that'll bring out a awareness to them, you know?
Who are you talking about?
They call big claims.
The corporate. Oh, you see, all those old men are dead.
This is.
And, but they, uh, they have, people that in the corporate world don't live in the same world as the rest of the city. A lot of times, they just, they don't know and they don't care. It would bother me to put my name on it, or be seen, or whatever, if you need to do that, I'm all for it.
The property on Jefferson was owned by a neighboring property owner, but they have since moved out. But yeah, she's got a picture of it here on, on the tax card. I know who owns it.
Okay. Monica?
Sir?
Could that show up again, the unfinished business of derelict property?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think they act, that's for sure, and this gets pretty, pretty long. But we deal with, it's a reminder for us to deal with those things as we go along. So, it's uncomfortable, but I guess, okay? Anybody else, else have any questions for the chief and the police report? With that said, you're done, unfinished business of the downtown revitalization?
Um, I'll get to that in my meeting, in my report, sir.
All right. Anyone out here about hearing his day with, this is not far enough to law about any. One of the details. Okay, what about the operation of water plant?
I'll get to that in my report, sir.
Nice. Well, the upgrades of sewer plant?
Get to that in mine.
Okay. And the main, here in the main street sidewalk project, what about that? We've got visible signs.
Um, it is in my report, uh, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, she likes it when I kind of do it all in my report, but.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Well, it.
It's okay. It's okay.
I've got a good smart answer we don't need here.
Makes the minutes weird.
I'll, I'll get to it in my report, that's okay.
You know, Monica, the, uh, property, clutter and derelict property, maybe could be, you know, the same.
Just make a dash.
Gotcha.
And we, we've been talking about that, and then we've got a few one on here that we haven't heard anything much about yet, they were repairs of the town hall.
I haven't been able to do anything, Monica, you, I mean, I've been busy with water filtration stuff, so I haven't had a chance to do anything with that.
Well, yeah, we'll just leave it, and we'll deal with it. Well, mother, okay, is there other, any other unfinished business? Okay, do we have new business?
I don't, but we will soon.
Okay, and out of the committee reports, finance and appropriations, nothing to report? Okay, personal ordinance, legal matters, anything to report?
I do in my report.
Mercy.
As far as finance, when are we going to start talking about that?
We need to start pretty soon. We were talking, we've been talking about that for two weeks now.
I mean, I figured, I just want to make sure.
A lot of, a lot of it is going to, honestly, a lot of that's going to come into, we have a lot more of an understanding after the Davenport and Associate Report, which, um, this is in my report, but I will let you know, we're hoping to have at the next town council meeting or sometime between now and the next meeting.
Okay, let's go ahead with yours.
Okay, um, this first one is, is going to take me a little while because there's a lot to it. Um, and I'll read through it first, and then I'll explain anything that may, may occur that you may have questions about. Mike Jones, Low Gear, Mayor Litz, and myself visited Giles County to look at their water plant and two water, paw, paw water filtration skids that are currently not in service. We met with Mr. Kevin Belcher, who's over the Giles PSA. Giles County has a Mencore filtration system that is basically a larger version of our water plant. Ms., Mr. Belcher was very helpful regarding helping the town with some of our current issues at our water plant. He gave me contact information for some individuals that can help with the town and some equipment and software. Giles County has done a very good job of mapping and inserting leak detection meters throughout their system to local, to locate and minimize water loss due to leaks. I feel like the town needs to implement, implement some of these programs to help our water accountability and loss of revenue. I feel like the town can start by installing four of these leak detection meters in plant areas or to at least break the town up into quadrants. This will allow the town at least some idea of areas where we should focus on for leak detection and repair. This would be something that needs to be considered for the next budget and possibly get some grant funding from certain agencies. Basically, we met with this guy, we went to their water plant. It's a bigger version of what we have. Um, we showed him some places where we're having trouble with some valves and some actuators. They had had the exact same issues that we had had. Um, they had went to an alternative, uh, valve company. And they also had a newer version software that we had that I think in the future, he got hit, they got theirs paid for through grant money. What it does is it would really help us figure out where we're losing water. Um, they also had the old, uh, software that we have, but, but they have a new current system. Now, granted, they have twenty water towers. They're a much bigger system than what, and I don't know how many pump stations they have. But the key thing that I got from them, number one, was the valves. I called the guy on the way home about the valves. He met me the next morning here, and we went over there. We've got the valves on order. It'll fix the problem that we're having with water getting into the backwash constantly. Then we'll be able to do their CIP clean and get everything running the way that it should be. So, I mean, he was very helpful. He gave me a lot of good information, a lot of contacts. Um, then every thousand feet, they have, it was thousand feet, wasn't it? Did they have leak detection meters?
No, it, they, they done theirs in, uh, they, they do theirs in gallons, they done in, uh.
Yeah, but they have meters in their line. Yeah, but they have meters in their lines, how, how far apart did he say they were?
I believe it's five thousand.
Five thousand, anyway, you know, I don't think we need to, to go, uh, spend a, a big sum of money. But you know, every year, you know, if you, if you go quadrants one year, then you're in eighths the next year, then you're in sixteenths the next year. Put in four leak detection. Then at some point, you'll have enough to know, we know it's on Jefferson Avenue, we've got to find this leak. So, right now, we have no idea. It's just like Sean had talked about before, you know, what are we doing about water loss? Well, we didn't know where the leaks are. Well, I never thought about this, th- they have a very, very solid mapping system. Very solid mapping system. And basically, if they have a leak, they can pinpoint it to what area? Five thousand feet?
And another thing that they do, they have meters on their tanks. They know how much water's coming out and they know how much water is supposed to be going in. So that's another way they can...
And see, they don't measure theirs based on percentage, they measure theirs based on gallons per minute out of the tank. Which is a different way of formulating it, but it makes more sense to me to do it that way. Because that way you can look at your numbers, and he told Logear, if you'll, if you'll look at these numbers over a four or five hour, and he said usually from three to, to six or seven in the morning, you'll get an idea of what your water, of what you're losing in your water if you do those right down the levels at all those times. He gave us all kinds of stuff. But I think that the leak detection meters are gonna be the thing, um, and I'm, he called, actually called me yesterday. And he's given me a name for, a company for them, see how much it would cost to do it. Uh, basically, all we would have to do is turn the water off in a certain, certain area, put the meter in, then, you know, we could calculate how much water's going through. We can read this meter, if it's went from a thousand an hour to four thousand an hour, we know we have a leak from that meter going on. That way we could, like I said, you know, it doesn't have to be something that we throw a bunch of money at, it could be something that we gradually do and then, cause he said that they gra, they had to do it in a gradual, you know, five, six-year basis, but it's gonna help us with our water accountability and finding leaks that we need as well as not having to treat water that we're putting in the ground somewhere, so. Uh, it was, it was a really, really good experience, the guy was super helpful. Um, but, and then we did look at the, those, uh, paw water plants, but that'll be a discussion, uh, for another day. But I just wanted to let everybody know that they have a good system, they've got it set up right. And I think that if we model our some, somehow like they've got theirs, like I said, they've got twenty tanks, I don't know how many pump stations, we don't have all that. But we do have, I will say, an inefficient way of not being able to find leaks that we have right now, so.
There's a county-wide system, right?
Yeah, there's a county, they're a PSA, they, they do, they do the whole county and all the towns, um...
And they even go to Western D.
Mm-hmm. But it's, it wa, it was, it was a opening for me, I'll just put it that way. Um...
They report, I'll, the, West Gill Park, Glenland, was that, was that one of the Western D part where they shut the water plant?
They got a hundred fifty miles of main line.
Great, you know, that, that's good. Yeah, that'll go forever.
And they have a, a meter every five thousand feet to tell them where a leak is. So, but that's gonna be something that we look into in, in budget season. Um, it was on the, uh, unfinished business, but obviously Miles Concrete is in town replacing the sidewalks on North and South Main Street, as well as the section on Church Avenue. Um, this should take a week or so, probably more, a s, more the sew part than the week, um, to be completed. One good thing about it is the weather looks promising, uh, I don't expect any delays. Um, they were able to, I talked to him, he said, uh, demo and the existing sidewalk up there went a lot quicker and easier than what he thought it would. He wasn't sure how thick it would be, it turned out it wasn't really thick at all. Um, I will tell you, in the check run, uh, he is asking for a deposit for materials. Um, he's a small business, uh, so, you know, we do have a deposit for materials on his invoice. But then we do have some, some money in retainer that, to where we have a little, if it's not the way done, the way we want it to be done, we've got a little something to
Hold back.
To make sure that we get what we want. But I've been very pleased with what he's done. Um, he went off, he's already went over and taken the, uh, the asphalt section off of the sidewalk over on Church Avenue. He's gonna replace that with, with concrete. Um, and then he's gonna, to do a little bit of work on Buck Avenue where we had a tear up, he's gonna do a cross from Harpo's, then obviously he'll finish the, uh, there at the barber shop. Um, and I talked to Mike, did you happen to talk to him at all about the rails? Are we gonna try to concrete the rail?
He was, he was here today.
Okay, we're gonna either incorporate the railing in with the, with the concrete as it's poured or just tap, screw it in, but I think if we do it with the concrete, we'll get a lot better, a lot better product.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't know if anybody has any questions about that, I think, I, I've been impressed with this guy and his, and his workers, I think they...
What's the, um, what's the traffic control situation?
We're off the right of way right now.
Okay, good.
I mean, I think, I think we're gonna get away with not having to, to do any road closures. Um, my thing is if it's off V-Dot right of way to where they wouldn't replace the sidewalk, then we're, obviously we're not on here right of way if we're on sidewalk.
As long as everybody's safe, Jason.
Keep on keeping on.
Uh, just a comment or a question, whatever, I'll never take any pictures, but we really need to document that.
Okay.
And maybe even put it on our Facebook page, I mean, this is a, a big project that, you know, I'm not saying we need to, we, we, we don't always need to puff our chairs all the time and remind everybody how awesome we are, which we are, but I mean, something especially as there was a public like that has been an eyesore for a long time. I, I just, I just feel like it's important. It's part of, it's part of being a town, you know, I understand that, you know, we're taking care of this. It's hard to tell Maxing on Facebook page or not, but we'll find out.
Um, next thing I have, uh, that, I had, I talked about this in the past, but the town has reached out to Davenport and Associates and I kinda talked about this earlier, to have a review of the town's current financial situation in the next two weeks. It looks as though this will occur. Uh, the town will have a better understanding, um, when I say the town, I mean the town council. Will have a better understanding of what funds we can use on, on projects like the downtown project and the Staley Spring, uh, development project. Those are gonna be the two big things, um, in my opinion, that are coming in the future, uh, that we're gonna have to make some decisions on. Um, and I think before those decisions are made, this is gonna be the key piece of information for everybody to base that decision on. These are the experts, um, we've had a meeting with them, he, he really explains things, uh, to where you can understand them. Um, and, and will give us a good recommendation on what he feels comfortable with us doing going forward as far as these two projects go. Because I will tell you, Staley Spring, uh, and the downtown are gonna cost some money. Uh, there probably will be some debt involved in Staley Spring as well, so. But I would rather you hear that from the experts than, than from me, so we'll get that set up. Um, the town did meet with Jason Vaughn of National Pools, actually it was Monica, Mike and myself, to an extent. Um, uh, National Pools had a run-up to get some, just some preliminary information regarding a potential splash pad on the downtown side. Um, they have reviewed the town's lot and our infrastructure in the area so that they could do their proposal. Um, they required, uh, a six-inch sewer, uh, line, which we do have that available. Uh, Mike went down there and looked at the, looked at the, the lot, and what you, did you say it was six inch?
Four inch.
Four inch?
Four inch out of.
Four inch out of, uh,
I just want, I want a plan.
Being out of grade. So, the grade would not be that big of a deal. Um, don't have a price on it yet, so that's something in the future, but we just wanted to get that ball rolling so that we could get you, uh, some idea of what we're looking at if, if the town does go that route. We had a pre-bid meeting today with potential contractors, uh, and the lane group, uh, these bids were for the Kinder Valley Loop. The bids will be open on March twenty-fifth at three P.M. to award the project. This project is using VDH grant funding, um, so they will have to go through Davis Bacon, um, DBEs, which those are, uh, those are minority-owned businesses and female-owned businesses that they actually have to reach out to, to get, to make sure that they are awarded some of the project if there are subcontractors being used. Um, and we had, I'd say what, six different contractors here, six or seven different contractors? Usually when you get that many, you're gonna get a, a pretty good price. When you come in here and they see two, they're like, well, let's shoot for the moon, especially when there's grant funding involved. Is when they really, they really like to see what they're...
They won't get parts.
Uh, but I'm pleased that we had that many, uh, bidders that did come, and I'm expecting us to get a pretty good bid. This should cost the town nothing, uh, it's all VDH's money. Um, I don't, I don't foresee it going over, so. And, uh, last thing I have on here unless I forgot something, I received a motion, uh, that was written from Brad Stallard of Penn Stewart that was sent to, uh, the attorney, Mr. Tolbert, regarding the opinion on Judge Showalter's, uh, opinion regarding the zoning issue on West Bumguard Avenue. The request was that the case be dropped with prejudice, this means that the case cannot be brought up again, so. Uh, that should be, I'm assuming that would get signed by Mr. Tolbert and dropped off to, uh, clerk of the court, um, because...
It's, it's an effort to stop the continued litigation. There's already been, what, two or three different opinions? And all the opinions are the same.
Well, I talked to somebody that's, that's kinda in the, in, in the legal side of things. And, you know, even if they do, uh, you know, try to take this to an appeals court, the appeals court gets to pick and choose what they hear.
Yeah.
They don't, they can look at something and say, this is not worth our time, this is... They get to pick and choose what they wanna hear and what they don't. And this individual doubted very seriously that an appeal, even in an appeals court would look at this and say, this is something we're even, we're even gonna look at.
We're not gonna spend our time on this.
So...
When will we, you said that will happen, but when, I assume they're gonna let us know when that officially happens?
Generally, well, it said that Mr. Stallard will get a copy, uh, from the, from the court, and then he'll forward that to me to go in our files and we cannot, that case cannot be tried again against the town by the same individual. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, unless... Um, another thing is, uh, I have set up with the school system some training for our CDL drivers.
Yeah.
So, uh, and that's gonna happen pretty, pretty quickly, so.
For the next class?
Yes.
Cause one started today, right?
This one is, they have to be there on nineteenth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, they teach you, nineteenth, one of, one of the two.
Is it required for the CDL or why, why, why are we doing it?
They have their learners right now, they have to go through this.
Times two.
Let me tell you, this, we're luck, lucky we, that we stumbled upon this because before we were gonna have to send them to school for like six, no, what, three months? And pay for the school and everything else, well, we found that they do these for a Class B, which that's all you have to have in the town of Root Street to run a CDL. So this is gonna save us a lot of time and money. Um, but, and I would like to thank the school board, the school system for working with us on this, so.
We have two vehicles company that require CDL. The dump truck and the tractor truck. And who, how many CDL operators do we have?
Three.
You do have that many?
Yeah, we have three right now.
That's good, I mean, that, I mean, not to say that we've not put enough, I, I, I was, I thought there was just one or two, I mean, I thought we were...
Well, the thing is, is
Up against...
In, in, instead of us having one, two people, especially like snow removal, one person driving the dump truck for ten hours, we can do five and five and split it up and, you know?
Yeah, no, it's easier and everybody...
And then somebody gets sick or can't get here or whatever.
It's a way, it, it, it comes with an incentive too, does it not?
Yes.
Okay.
Who, who's the third one, Joe?
Patrick.
Patrick, Patrick.
Yeah, Patrick used to drive trucks all the way up in Northern Virginia and do line work and...
Okay. All right, now, with yes, now, Mary, Carrie, right now, the farmer's market property down there, anything going on with that lawsuit thing?
I haven't heard back from him, um, I'm glad you brought that up with me. I had called, uh, Mary Blackburn, which is the paralegal for Mr. Stallard, and gave her all the information that I had and what I needed, and I have not heard back from him.
Okay, I have another question, did we participate in the nationwide emergency alert system test today?
No, and I said last year we was gonna do that, that's a tornado thing, actually.
Yeah, yes, and it was today.
It's a white tornado.
Is our system, is that functional?
The one down in Fire Park?
Yeah.
Unless you go down there and you gotta do it manually. And which we talked about that last year, I thought we was gonna do it by the, what the, the county, the counties...
Where we're gonna, where we're gonna use the honeywell system.
Okay. I'm glad you brought that up, because I did a survey su- Sunday through today of nine senior citizens. And out of that nine, seven did not know about any kind of an alert system. Uh, three said they, uh, only carried their cell phones, which were flip phones, for emergencies if they were to fall or be out in their garden and have, and have a problem, right? So, that's not a system that can be relied on. Uh, just from nine people, I got seven that didn't know that there was such a thing as an alert system.
What, Pat, what, I think, as we talked about this last year, about this, i- i- it obsolete? What, this, this one?
It probably is.
Well, it was, it was...
It's twenty-five years old.
And when it put up, I couldn't hear it.
Yeah.
And it's not, cause I'm, got that bad hearing.
I think it's still worse, but I mean, you, it's, you'd have to drive down there and do it, and tornado, you ain't like that. You can't do it from the car anymore? I'm just saying, we need an alert system.
What's our, what, I mean, if we can't do it over their phone and you can't hear it from down there, I mean, i- if you're gonna do a pro, if you're gonna do a proper alert system, you're gonna have to put up, I don't know how many towers.
And that was the point when this system was originally put in, but it just stopped.
Well, we did, I can't remember what event that was, sometime last spring. We had a tornado went in and it popped up on my TV. That's part of the national...
That's right, yeah, it is.
So, there's multi-layers of any emergency system, not one thing is gonna be perfect, but if you have two or three systems in place, that's probably the best you can do, I'm not, I'm gonna say that's an end-all, be-all, but I'm just saying there are multiple ways that we alert our citizenry of what's going on.
Well, I'm, I, I don't know about everybody else, but, and this was years ago. But I had to go to training in Illinois for the company that I worked for then. And it was every other night. A, a big huge siren, of course, that, these were monstrous things.
Yeah.
And everybody would go to the swimming pool area of the, the hotel, but I don't know if, I don't, I don't know what the proper protocol is for that anymore.
Well, when this system, when we have the one siren, there was a plan for four. And it, it just fell through, but I don't think the town is doing anything in the way of alerting people. But I don't think the town is doing anything in the way of alerting people if something happens.
Can I, I make a suggestion? Can we not reach out to Chuck Parnell, who's Emergency Services in McAllen? And ask him how, what his idea of emergency, uh,
Alert system?
Alert system is in this area in particular?
Well, I, I mean, they have one.
That's what I'm saying, but, you know, like what works and what doesn't, and what's available, and if they could even maybe do a fire or some sort of promotional thing or something to educate everybody.
Yes, I think that, that's needed to tell our senior citizens,
Yeah.
hey, you need to get, have this on your telephone.
I, I, listen, I, I, I know this, one thing we can do, and they're always looking for people to speak, and I'm not saying this is going to be a huge outreach, but the senior citizens meet down at the
Yeah.
community center every Tuesday or first Tuesday or something. Um, could we not, we could probably try to get Mr. Parnell up here to go over how to register for these things. But you're saying they don't carry their phone with them a lot, but, I mean, at least, at least we're making an effort.
Correct. And I would, I mean, I would say, I mean, uh, it is, that is a generational thing. I know people that at that age that turned their phone off at night and whatever. My phones, both phones are always on, all of them, website.
You better warn me.
And that's, I mean, again, that's a generational thing.
Well, I, you, you have a vocational thing.
Well, but, but, but my personal as well.
Well, I know about that, but, see, I contend, if somebody, that's pure, the dirtiest, they, they did a study, and they said that most people would not lay their phone down for one day for a hundred dollars. They would absolutely not. I'll give them ten damn dollars to throw mine. I hate the thing. So now, it is, it is, it is maybe a generational thing, but God, if I could remember, Mama saw me when the sun went down, and there was no other way to get out of that, and it, it.
I'm trying to say you're old, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I, 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 I mean, you're trying to say, you're trying to get rid of us. That's what it is.
Are you looking at me when?
No, I'm looking, I'm seeing, if you don't love, you the youngest one in the year. Yes, you are. So I wasn't looking at you. I was a glancing on home.
Monica, Monica just told it up. It is one of the first things you see on our website.
That, the county, how to get on the county.
When you click on it, and it's the registration to get on the county system. I put that on there a long time ago.
I'd be glad to go down there, I'll go down and I'll pull up anyway. But now, as far as the drill, I didn't, they usually, the state used to send you email when they, um, drill aid.
Uh, Dave Evans always pushed drug business. What was the name of the system that had four thousand, five thousand? Everybody, we all had to go through the computer places?
Yeah.
No, I've never heard that mentioned ever again. So I don't know, you know, there's holes in this knot of our making.
And, and honestly, there's not a thing any systems.
Well, I, I realize that too, but I do, you know.
And if you're on call, Mayor, I took you, took you off.
Sure, I know, you took it exactly right. I know, I mean, I, you caught me for looking, but that's what I prefer, I know.
I tell you, and that's like Lake Spring, you remember a couple of years, a few years ago when they had their tornado? It went off, and it hit just like that, too, so, I mean.
You see, that, we, we, that was a lot of participation from Rurutree. They all went to the schoolhouse and asked me the next day, well, they'd get you up was Wednesday night, I think. I said, give me a four? I slipped through it. I never did. I didn't have a clue.
Or, or something talking about that same night, you know, that same night, they, they passed over us.
Yeah, it bounced, it, it.
Somebody said, well, what's the difference? Tornado, tornado. I said, no, 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 a tornado is on the ground. A funnel cloud's up there. I said, big difference.
Big difference.
But I knew two.
And I was probably right in the past.
Well, I knew two of the guys. They said they heard the lady, and they flew out, looking to see what was going on.
I do too.
I know. You used to go off in Wichita, Kansas, man, you want to stay in the backyard.
I always wanted to see one.
So you can get systems out there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but, but it's, it's not a, driven on an uncommon. So, I don't know what that student is, have not been, not taken light of it. Can Jason, if we, maybe we can look into that.
I think Dirk's got a good idea. Speak to the senior citizens.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
I'll talk to him.
Yeah, that would be a good, yeah.
Radio station, too.
Always remember you can eat.
Well, we can go down there and just take a laptop. We can register, register, do a thing. Yeah, I'll talk to what's his name. That's good, we appreciate it.
Because I think that, that alert system will call your home phone. If, and I'm sure they, probably most of these people still have home phones. So you can set that up. You put your home phone, your address, your email address, all your things in there, and it alerts you on all those different things, so.
Yeah, most of the senior citizens still have landlines.
So we could easily do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll need your help.
I'm sure.
You're better at computers than I am.
Film, film trip.
Do we have, Jason, anybody else have anything to ask?
I have something. I forgot to, uh, and I told you all about this. I'm going to go back here and put this into our new business. The Shredded Event is going to be April the nineteenth. Um, I've got that all set up. I've started advertising it. We're going to put it out in the water bills this month, though we got a flyer to put out in the water bills. That's from nine A.M. to twelve noon on the nineteenth. It's a Saturday.
Saturday morning.
Yep.
And it was so well appreciated, whatever. You got an awful lot of, of feedback.
What's that date again?
Um, April nineteenth.
You can get rid of a whole lot of cash checks.
Well, they got somebody to deal with it. Okay, now, does anybody else have any thing that they need to bring forward? Now, from what I understand, I need to ask for a motion.
She's got to do, at the treasure report first.
We got to do that.
I forget, okay. Now, y'all thought I was doing good.
You are.
You are. You're just a little ahead of yourself.
Listen, I understand how patient she is, Al.
Okay, so I wrote these checks, um, it's not very long. AZ Office Resource, seventy-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Appalachian Power, twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Ostenbach, um, two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-eight cents. BMS Direct, uh, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Centos, seven hundred and fifty dollars and thirteen cents. Electronic Systems, forty-three dollars and seventy cents. Ferguson, ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and eight cents. Food Country USA, twelve dollars and forty-eight cents. Harpoes Hardware, a thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and fifty-four cents. Joint Public Service Authority, a thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-six, ninety-two cents. Lines Cleaning Service, a thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Miles Concrete, sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Mobile Communication America, sixteen dollars and fifty cents. Salem Stone, a thousand, eighty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. Chantel, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. Shreddet USA, ninety-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Students Support Fund, two thousand dollars. Southwest Virginia Media LLC, ninety-five dollars. The Bank of Marion, a thousand, five hundred and two dollars and twenty-seven cents. Thrive, thirty-two dollars. U.S. Cellular, four hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. Miss Utility is thirteen dollars and eighty cents, and that's a total of fifty-four thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Any questions?
They sure weren't bidding checks before they found it, so. Mr. Mayor, I have one more question for the town mayor, Jason. What about the caboose?
I spoke, I meant to, I meant to bring that up. I spoke to a, a guy that, that does paintwork out of Marion. Um, and he said the best thing to do, he said is to, to strip that paint and then paint over top of anything that's lead, because he said sandblasting it is the last thing you want to do, because then it becomes airborne. So.
It progresses, maybe.
Yes, he, and he, he actually gave me the name of what we needed, and, and I'll probably go to him to order what we need.
With springs here.
And that way, but he did say sandblasting is not the way to go, because if you're worried, if anybody's worried about lead-based paint, paint over it, because if you make it airborne, that's when it's
Paint over it, it's, it's locked in. Yeah.
But yes, I, we made that call, what, a month ago? I meant to, I've already brought that up, I'm sorry.
That's good. Okay, now, Monica?
Yes, sir.
I have been asked to form, to ask you all for a motion and a second to convene to a closed session per the code of Virginia. Now, read this, get it correct before we do the motion?
Yes.
Okay, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Okay, now.
Need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion. Will we do that?
I'll second it.
Okay, I will, in favor of, please signify by stating aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, now, well, this didn't have a way, ask everybody to leave.
Monica's going to stay.
That's all right.
Hold on, let me get this turned off.